All right, I will call to order tonight's meeting. It is Monday, October 27th. It is 6 o'clock. We are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We are on Zoom. We are being livestreamed for local cable access and recorded for YouTube. We are a full member board tonight. And before we get started, if I could just have everybody stand for the pledge, please.
...... of the United States of America. Under the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice for all.
We have approval of Treasury warrant 26-9 and 26-PW-9. I think this one, I was looking through, had the school, one of the school assessments?
Second quarter, so.
Second quarter. Anything else of note? Any questions or discussion from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Treasury warrant 26-9 and 26-PW-9.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, roll call Alex.
All right. Second, aye.
One, aye.
Not aye.
Ledry. Thank you. We have a couple sets of meeting minutes. Probably best to do these individually. We'll start with our regular meeting minutes for the October 14th meeting. If there's no concerns, I will entertain a motion to approve October 14th, 2025 regular meeting minutes as presented. So motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, conversation? Alex?
All right.
Second, aye.
One, aye.
Not aye.
Ledry. We have the executive session minutes, which have been separated out for us just by topic. Both of these, I would say, are still ongoing issues. So if there's any conversation or questions, but I think we should consider approving not to be released at this time. Entertain a motion.
So move. Doing both at the same time, right?
Yeah, for both topics for October 14th.
Yep.
Motion to approve as presented, approved but not released. Motion, yes?
Second.
Alex, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Alex?
All right.
Second, aye.
One, aye.
Not aye.
Ledry. And then we have the meeting minutes for the off-meeting week for October 20th, which was for the public hearing requests. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve October 20th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Any question or conversation?
Just a question. In these minutes, I'm sorry, October 20th, I wasn't here. Okay.
Any other questions coming? Motion is second, so roll call Alex.
All right.
Second, absent.
One, aye.
Not aye.
And ledry. Thank you. All right, we will move into public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Mr. Blair, name and address, please.
Please, Blair. I'm in A. Hill Drive. So I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider your votes to not put Woodside Ave., Pioneer Lane, or Pioneer Road, whatever it is, and Arrowhead Drive on the warrant. I'm asking you to reconsider. I want to read a couple of things. I want to get a couple of things out. So this is a letter from your meeting packet that I took offline from the Office of the Planning Board. To the Select Board, Street Acceptance Request for Special Town Meeting 2025. At a public meeting held on October 14th, 2025, the Planning Board discussed the street acceptance request for Lindsey Lane in Bryce Estates, Woodside Ave. in Bryce Estates, Pioneer Circle in Bryce Estates, and Arrowhead Way, Bear Hill 2 Estates. The Board voted unanimously, and there's one guy on the Board who can't stand me. The Board voted unanimously to recommend favorably the acceptance of the four roadways noted above. In a memo dated October 9th, the Planning Board noted that there are outstanding items as described by DPW Director Christopher Koloski. The Board advised that Mr. Blair must complete these items to Director Koloski's satisfaction no later than October 17th, or they will rescind their recommendation. In multiple reports from Quinn Engineering, it was noted that grass had not taken in certain areas and that street trees had not been planted. The Board agreed that Mr. Blair could replant the grass in the spring. In lieu of planting trees, he was asked to communicate with the homeowners to inquire if they would like a tree planted in their yard. If they declined, he was asked to donate $100 per tree to the Town Open Space Preservation Fund. Should you have any questions? Do not hesitate to call. On October 17th, in an email from Chris Koloski to Tamika and Seth, please be advised that Mr. Blair is taking care of the outstanding items that were listed by the DPW in a memo dated October 9th. Now, I don't know what else I have to do. Subdivision rules and regulations. You read it the other night, Jen, and I think you left a couple of things out. First of all, these subdivisions were all approved prior to those regs being approved. But here's what it says. "In any subdivision, it shall be the responsibility of the owner applicant to maintain the roadways, rightaways. This maintenance shall be performed until such time as the Planning Board and DPW Superintendent give their written notification to the Select Board that these rights of ways meet the standard outlined in their approval." Now, and the roads are accepted at town meeting. So you got a letter from the Planning Board, you got a letter from the DPW, they're happy. Now, how can it get accepted at a town meeting if you won't put it on a warrant? Now, Arrowhead Way, you guys make reference to a report by John Turner. They paid $1,000 for this report, okay? It's toilet paper, literal toilet paper. The only thing at play here is the road. There's nothing to do with the erosion that happened on the slopes. There's nothing to do with any of that because that's on a lot. What if I didn't build the house? What if someone, what if I sold the lot and someone else built the house? Does that make the road not acceptable? Anyways, regarding the adequacy of Arrowhead Way, in his report, pavement section, which is all the Planning Board has to do with, okay? They don't have anything to do with the lots, just the roadway. Regarding the adequacy of Arrowhead Way pavement sections, we would need to do an investigation involving coring. You've got to core the pavement, drilling, sampling, and testing to assess the pavement condition. Okay, I have reports from Yankee Engineering. All the compaction tests passed on the gravel. I have reports from Yankee Engineering on all the pavement. It all passed. Everybody has the reports, all of that. How in the world is this guy, he said, "Water could potentially cause issues with the pavement if the pavement was not designed or constructed properly." Everybody inspected it. Yankee Engineering inspected it, Kevin Quinn inspected it, Chris Koloski's guys inspected it. It was all done right. And they sent you a letter telling you that. That's the only thing on this report. I mean, "Construction of Arrowhead Way and roadway likely resulted in significant alteration to the stormwater infiltration characteristics of the property." I mean, duh, we put pavement down. What do you think happened? But how is this? That was a slope that went from that top of that hill all the way down to Palmigusset Road. You guys must have driven by it 1,000 times. It's so steep, the roadway actually cut that water off and put the water in catch basins into the drainage system and sent it the other way, not towards there. Plus, there was a stormwater report done for Bear Hill 1 that we followed when this was designed and it was approved by your engineer. The water leaving the site has left at the same velocity and the same volume that it was prior to construction. It's a given. They won't approve it without it. How in the world, there was a 500-year storm? Storms are measured in inches per hour, okay? DEP said to one of the members of the Planning Board, and they regurgitated it at a meeting, that it was a 500-year storm. If there's a tornado and I built your house, is it my fault? If the house gets wrecked? If there's a 500-year storm, these roadways are designed for 2, 5, 10, 25, and 50-year storms and 100-year storms. They're not designed for 500-year storms. But how would you know that? You're not a Planning Board member. Arrowhead Way is perfectly constructed. All the grass is growing. Kevin went back up there last Friday. All the grass is growing. There's no erosion happening. There's absolutely no reason. You say, "What do you want me to do, come back in May? What am I going to say? Yeah, I fixed everything." There's nothing to fix. How can, I don't understand what you guys are doing here. That's Arrowhead Way, okay? If you want to ask me some questions, or if you want to, we want to figure out why that's not on the warrant, I'm happy, I'm standing here, I'm happy to do it. Now let's go to Woodside Ave., okay? If I heard you correctly, two of you guys voted for it and two of you denied it, so I got to find it here. But you denied it because, that's Arrowhead Way. That's Arrowhead Way. Hold on. I'm getting there, a little disorganized. Yes. On Woodside Ave., you say that there's an area that could cause erosion. Not resolved. And correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Station 8+00, it's 800 feet up the road. Not resolved. Some slope surface is not stabilized against erosion. Place lowman seat to establish stand of grass. He says areas of ground surfaces not growing grass have been reseated, but the grass is not germinated. Now, I can tell you, because I went down there and looked, it's germinated.
Yeah.
And there's no, there was no reason not to put those roads on the warrant. So I brought a map, if you want to see it, a plan. Basically, this is station 8+00. There's a big, long hill that goes down to an infiltration gallery down here. These slopes kept eroding because it kept raining on them. They're all seeded and now they're growing. We had a good time, it was a good time for it to grow. It's all grown, it's all germinated. I guarantee, everybody here can guarantee that. So what I'm trying to say is, now in Pioneer, you didn't put that on the warrant because you didn't put Woodside on the warrant. But there was no reasons not to put it on the warrant. I ask you to reconsider. Well, I have one more thing to say. We submitted a citizen's petition that had over 170 signatures on it. Your attorney said it was not valid. My attorney differs. That's a lawsuit. Number one. Number two, how hard do you think it's going to be for us to get another 30 signatures to have a special town meeting to put these on the warrant? There's absolutely no reason for you guys not to put them on the warrant. There's no reason. You can't give me a reason. Come back in the spring and do what? Everybody's happy. It doesn't make any sense. It's, if you guys have an issue, put it on the warrant, bring it up at the town meeting. There are no issues. The Planning Board recommends favorably, the DPW's happy. How many people do I have to make happy? How many people? And your town engineer, your review engineer, says everything's done according to plans. And everything's been tested. All the sewer lines have been mandrilled, vacuum tested, all the water lines have been tested, chlorinated. Everything's done. The drainage has all been inspected when it was been put in. Everything's working according to plan. Now, these people get stuck because I, there's nothing else for me to do. Planning Board says it's good, DPW said it's good, and I'll let the town decide. That's up to you guys. But I think you're making a mistake.
Name and address, please.
My name is Caitlin Barczewski. I own a lot of Arrowhead Way. Me and Cle have spoken a lot since July about the erosion on Arrowhead Way, and my property was severely affected by it at that point. I have packed in the entire backside of my lot. I will vouch that none of my erosion has moved since I've packed in, and they've made numerous revisions to the road. I used to get all the water from my neighbor's property, like across, over my driveway, down my backyard. But since they've made all the revisions to the road, the Planning Board has been out during most of the rainstorms, and I've been outside in quite a few of the rainstorms, like watching that water. None of it comes down my driveway anymore. I don't have any concerns about my road.
Hi, Emma Foster, 1 Pioneer Circle. I'm coming up on four years of living at my house. My road has been maintained. I have literally watched our entire Woodside and Pioneer be built because I was the very first one to move in on that side. We have had multiple complaints that we brought to Cle and his team. They have addressed every single one timely. I have been at these meetings prior to try to get Cle to do stuff. He's done everything he's supposed to do. From my perspective, I rely on the people sitting at this Borg right now to be in favor of the residents of this town. And at this point, right now, I have a six-month-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old at home that I'm not having dinner with and getting bedtime with because I feel like I need to be here to advocate for myself, my neighborhood. There was no reason for Pioneer to be declined. I understand trucks having to pass through Woodside to get to Pioneer. But I am really concerned about the financial burden that this would put on us as residents. And, you know, to me, like, safety is number one. If I need an emergency vehicle at my home for myself or my children, that's just like top, top of mind. So I just, I just want to put that out there that, you know, I count on, count on all of you to make the decision, best decision for us as residents.
Name and address, please.
Margaret Murphy-Lions, 16 Woodside Ave., Rutland, Mass. I share many of Emma's sentiments, too. We are lucky to say that we have had very minor things. For a house or a property in anything, the one or two things that have come up, the Blairs have addressed. We see them frequently, working on the streets, working throughout the neighborhood. Our hope would be that you do consider the information from the DPW, from the hearing company, from anybody else that has been out. We see people in the neighborhood, anybody else that has been out to assess the conditions of the roads and again, act in favor of the residents. I've watched so many meetings, the Planning Board, the Select Board, and I would hope that any bias towards the developer doesn't impact the people of the town. Because I can say right now, the way the Planning Board kind of conducts itself and the way some of these meetings are run, it's small-town politics, and there's no place for that when it comes to our safety. I too have children, and I do not want to see, you know, anybody being put in a position where safety is compromised. And I really would hope that whatever feelings people have towards developers in this town, you put them aside and do what's best for the people of Rutland. Because it is a little ridiculous. If you watch from an objective standpoint, it's not objective. It's quite subjective, to be very honest. So thank you.
I'd just like to add one thing. The school buses will not go into a private subdivision to pick up the kids. These kids have to walk from the end of Pioneer all the way down to Main Street for the school buses to pick them up, where they would normally, if the roads were accepted by the town, they would drive in and pick them up. I've asked numerous times, I've talked to the school, I've talked to the bus company, will not do it until the roads are accepted by the town. It's an unfair burden.
Name and address, please.
Michelle Van Wright, 230 Turner Kill Road. I think there's been a long history of things not getting completed on a timely basis, and I think it made the right decision to put, to not put this on the warrant, and I don't think it belongs there yet until, oh, so.
Anybody else for?
Joe Woolly, 3 Pioneer Circle. We're all taxpayers, too. You know, we pay for the services and whatnot of the town, we don't get them. We pay to clear everybody else's roads and take care, make sure that their, things are taken care of, and we don't get it. So we've been paying our taxes all these years, and we're just looking to have our turn to be a resident of the town and be accepted. There's nothing, I don't see anything wrong with the roads. Roads are done.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to add for public comment?
Chris? He there?
Yes, I can see him.
He's there, but I don't know.
He's maybe.
He's also at home with our kids, so that could be a chaos thing.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. So as you, you know, it's public comment, it's not necessarily something for the Board to deliberate at this time, but we will make note of the comments. Thank you. All right, if there's no other public comment, we will move into communications, member comments, announcements, town administrator update. Just a few things as far as chair updates. The November Central Tree Times will be published on Monday, November 3rd. We currently have two vacancies on our Capital Improvement Planning Committee, so if anybody is interested in volunteering for that, you can submit your applications to the office if interested. For fall cleanup, just a reminder, please not to blow leaves into the public ways. It's a hazard to drivers and it's a violation of the bylaws. And DPW will be installing signs and boulders at the entrance to town-owned property at the end of Skyline Drive. Residents here have been using the site to dispose of yard waste, which is not permitted. And again, just a reminder that yard waste can be brought to DPW Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the final Saturday drop-off for yard waste at DPW is this coming Saturday, November 1st, from 8:00 until 1:00. We have the trunk-or-treat on the Common on Halloween, which is this Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00, and regular trick-or-treat hours are 5:00 to 8:00. The second annual food drive will start on Monday, November 3rd. We will be collecting donations in the Annex Building to benefit the Rutland Food Pantry for their Thanksgiving and Christmas distributions. For residents that donate five or more items, you can get entered into a giveaway to win a gift basket from one of our local businesses. And finally, just one of our long-term employees, Nancy McCaruso, is going to be retiring on October 31st. She's been with us since 2002 and has served numerous different departments, including the Select Board, Town Administrator's Office, the Building Department, and the DPW. So we thank Nancy for all of her service, and we wish her the best in her retirement. Are there any other member comments or announcements?
There's been some talk, and I had emailed Chief Monaco and Seth this morning to confirm trick-or-treat plans, given the potential weather forecast. Currently, it seems like the weather's going to clear by Friday afternoon, so the plan currently is to continue with the regular scheduled Friday afternoon, everything. So that's just for, I've been getting a lot of comments and questions about it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. Seeing all these people here and hearing about the issues from Arrowhead and the other streets, I would hope that the, in the future, during this meeting, I would hope that the Board would entertain a motion to revisit the street acceptance. I was not able to be there at that meeting, so it was a tie, and I would like to weigh in on that, and I would like to ask the Board to reopen that discussion for a revote. The Board, as I read it, there seemed to be some issues that had not been resolved. And I guess it was disappointing to see the vote, the Board go into a 2-2 tie, which negates anything moving forward, instead of postponing it until these issues could be resolved. So I'm asking the Board to reconsider opening the discussion for the sake of the townspeople here and all those that live on those streets. I'll be making a motion under old business.
Anybody else have comments or announcements? Turn it over to you, Mr. Town Administrator, for your update. Thank you.
All right. Update of the last couple of weeks. Obviously, we've been working very hard on the special town meeting coming up on November 20th. We have before you tonight the final version of the warrant for your signature. Part of this whole process after November 20th, we basically have a week to 10 days in order for our finance team to come together to prepare the documents for the Department of Revenue for the tax classification hearing. In order for us to meet the deadline, you guys will have to hold a special meeting the first week in December for the tax classification hearing. I think we have it scheduled for December 1st right now, but it could be one of those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever's convenient for you guys to set, to get that classification hearing done in order to get it to the printer on time, make sure that the tax bills go out on time. As you know, we have the town planner vacancy. You have the job description in front of you this evening to discuss. Trying to come out of here tonight with a sense of the Board, a meeting with the Planning Board tomorrow to come up with a plan of how we're going to advertise and move forward with that position. Speaking of retirements, today we received the notice that our Finance Director Donna Kucha will be retiring at the end of November. The finance team currently in the process of putting together a transition plan that will be presented to the Board for your consideration. We're looking at all types of different options, from establishing a regional or shared finance position to contracting an accounting firm as standalone, or proceed with a direct hire to replacement as we have now. So we're trying to weigh out all the options so we give you the information correctly for you guys to make the decision. Next Wednesday, we have a department head meeting. Some of the topics to discuss, obviously, the FY '26 budget submissions are due at the end of this week. As you know, we've been updating the job descriptions for all non-union town employees. That is done. This will be an opportunity for the department heads to speak up about any changes that they would like to see. Once that's done, we'll have a new wage and classification plan ready for you to review that should go into effect in July of next year. In the Rutland Community Electricity Program, as you know, we had the hearing a few weeks ago. That form has been submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for the review. Once approved, the program will allow residents to opt in to the electricity purchasing opportunity that the town will provide. So that's all I have. Everything else I'll discuss during the agendas as they come up.
Okay. Any questions for Seth before we continue?
If I, it's not necessarily a question, if I may. Given the kind of fairly recent department head resignations, retirements, is it possible to consider outsourcing, whether it's with some group to do kind of formal exit interviews that takes Board and existing staff out of it? Because I think that there are possibly some underlying themes with those that hopefully maybe an outside group, whether it's CMRPC, Collins, something could, could
Yep.
better understand why we have revolving door of department heads.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we will move into
Excuse me, point of order. Does the Board need to authorize the town administrator to do that where it was presented by a Board member and not the Board?
I was going to conduct an exit interview regardless, so if you would prefer a third-party do it instead of me, that's perfectly fine.
I mean, Leo I, I mean, Leah, were you talking specifically about in this instance, or just in general moving forward?
I think with the most recent, at least the most recent two, um, the planner and the accountant, but I would also say there could be value if, um, the town administrator was previous, there, you know, the board kind of did that, but I know that there were concerns, so I don't know. Um, but those are kind of the ones that, that have been a, a revolving door, so.
Yeah, I'm not questioning whether we should do it or not.
Right, no, no, no.
I'm questioning whether the board should make a decision as to who's going to do it. Do we indeed authorize Seth to do it, or do we authorize him to seek outside counsel, so to speak?
Well, I think it's within the purview of the town administrator to conduct an exit interview for staff, correct?
Well, where the board's not involved.
Right.
So, that's a concern too. So, I mean, for me, I'd make a motion, uh, to use, to allow Seth to seek outside counsel for doing exit interviews, uh, with, uh, the understanding that those ideas will be presented to the board.
I, I would, yeah, it's, it's not in a, a topic on the agenda, so if it's something where this is seeking outside guidance that might incur costs, I think that's something that needs to be put on an agenda for us to have a, for, for bigger discussion about.
So Seth, we're authorizing Seth to come back with any type of compensation required for hiring somebody, what the, what the issues are to hire somebody, is that what the board is looking for? Uh, because I'm not sure I understand that we have said that we want to try to hire an outside source to take the board out of it and staff out of it, but we're just making a recommendation. I think it should be a formal recommendation by the board on a vote, that that's indeed what we want to do.
I understand, but it's not on the agenda for a formal discussion. Leah just brought it up as an option, so we can, a-again, it's within the purview of the town administrator to conduct an exit interview with his current employee as to why they would be looking to leave. If there's anything beyond that, I think it needs to be more formally discussed to decide what the parameters of that entail and what the board's comfortable with.
And, and I might say that if that's the case, I would like that done before our next person leaves, so we can use under the new parameters for that. So I'd like to make it on the next agenda.
Make note of that for the, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so moving into appointments and resignations, we do have a, um, letter of interest and application, um, from Mason Burke, who is here this evening for, um, the Historical Commission, and we also have a, um, letter of recommendation from the Historical Commission Chair, Peter Pacerb. Um, the commission did meet and, with Mason, um, and did unanimously recommend his, um, appointment to the committee, so I will, um, Mason, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the commission, if you could?
Uh, my name is Mason Burke. Um, I graduated from Watchus Regional High School over, uh, the spring and summer. Um, I was class of twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'm metal detect for, I've been metal detecting for over a decade, and I'd like to donate my artifacts to the Historical Society to be displayed, so younger generations can learn more about Rutland and Watchus, and the Watchus area. Um, I have some findings here with me today, if you guys would like to see them. Um, completely up to you.
Can I, I understand you're a member of the Historical Society?
Yes.
It's important, I was impressed, I saw Mason at the, um, Historical Society table at the craft fair over the, um, the weekend, the, so it was nice to see, and that was collaboration with the Historical Commission as well, so it was nice to see that and active participation in the community involvement and everything. Um, and I think it's great that a recent grad is kind of interested in staying in the community and giving back to the community, so I think that's awesome. Thank you.
It's nice to see the young faces too.
You guys have any questions? Sorry.
I am very pleased to see you stepping up to be on a committee. Thank you very much. I read from your resume, you've been interested in doing things for a long time.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and you mentioned in there that you find metallic. Can you explain that a little bit to me?
Um, yes, so, to put it into simpler terms, um, I swing a metal stick over the ground, and there is a coil that is attached to it, so like a little round part, and it has a wire connecting to a, uh, like a, like a, like a phone.
Yeah.
You swing it over the ground, say that there's something metal, uh, underneath the ground, it will send an electromagnetic sim, uh, signal into the metal and send it back up into the coil, which goes into the wire, all the way up to the.
Like a metal detector?
Yes.
Where do you do that? Do you do it like on grounds, like at the prison camp and stuff like that, looking for artifacts?
Unfortunately, I cannot do the prison camps, it is owned by DCR. I have asked, uh, once every ten years, uh, once every year for the past ten years, if I could get permission from them. I would deny each time, or just not respond to.
Okay.
I do it, I'm a metal detector at barns, uh, farms, fields, old houses. Um, I don't do it at the beach, like most people do. Um, it is quite picked over. Um, I recently have a permission over at Barrack Hill Road that I will be going to, hopefully on Wednesday. Um, like I said, I do have some artifacts I have with me in my pocket, if you guys would like to see them.
Uh, are those artifacts, do you donate those to the Historical Society then?
Uh, these ones are from Paxton, I found them yesterday. Um, the ones that I have that will be donated are in a case right now.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking for a case at the moment, uh, either a sp- spinning one, or just one that stands, stands up.
Great.
The one that I have is pretty small, it's about that big, red carpet, um, holds, I'd say sixteen items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more questions for you? I do have a question for the chairman when we're done.
Uh, Peter's not here. Michelle is vice chair, is here.
I'm the vice chair, if you have questions.
Hi, Michelle. Are you excited about having somebody on your group that brings you artifacts and stuff like that?
Well, a-yes, and, um, somebody who's on the younger side, and, and it's not all of us old folks, so it's really kind of nice to have a, a diverse, a diversity of people on the, on the committee. Peter will also have another man on the committee, so there's like a balance that way as well.
Okay, thanks.
So we're looking forward to having Mason join us, we're all very excited.
Thank you, Mason.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mason. There's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mason Burke to serve on the Historical Commission for a three-year term, so. All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? I'll call Alex.
All right. Second and I.
White and I, thank you.
Matt and I.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving into old business, we have the town planner position before us. Um, so, as Seth had mentioned, this one came before us at a previous, um, meeting, it's been slightly revised. Um, I think the intent here is really just to get any feedback from the board as far as the job description, um, that we can provide, and take that into consideration with the feedback from the planning board, just to make sure that we are comfortable with, um, the position, the duties of the planner, um, so that we have an, an accurate job description to reference, uh, for the next time it's posted, hopefully in the short term here.
Through the chair?
Sure.
I have read this, and while I admit, not being on the planning board or a town planner, it seems to cover just about every issue, and I do, what, am I mistaken, or did our previous town planner write this job description?
Uh, no, our first town administrator, Margaret Norwood, originally wrote it.
Okay, and this is what we've been using all this time for?
Yeah, with some item modifications here and there, yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
I think for, for me personally, I, I think it's, it's pretty inclusive of what I, I would expect. My one concern is, um, surrounding the community and economic development functions section, uh, which I don't necessarily disagree with what's written there. I, my concern centers more around the fact that that was in the previous job description, and I don't think the past two town planners have performed any of those functions. Um, so, I, I don't know if where we're at, we're in a position to include that as part of the job description, or if it is truly, um, you know, more of the, the department-related, um, you know, working with the, the planning board, um, and the planning functions, uh, so I, that's just a, a point of conversation, I'd be interested to hear the board's feedback on.
Question, Jen. Are, are you assuming that this is directed directly at the economic development, what was the committee?
No, not necessarily, it's just, you know, when we're talking about, you know, what it says in here, supports initiatives to attract, retain, and expand businesses and promote economic vitality, you know, we have some resources in town, however, again, that's, that's a point where I, I think we've fallen down as far as this particular department, where it, that hasn't been happening. It's been much more on the planning side and, um, of the house. So again, not to say that it's not needed, that the town would benefit from it, I just would like to, you, you know, if the board is amenable, or would like to keep it in the job description, I'd like to see a plan to have it actually come to fruition and see more being done around that, that area.
Yeah, I see. Go ahead, Jen. I, uh, I see where you're coming from. I, I, I feel that there are certain aspects here that should be part of the plan, planner's duties, uh, so I wouldn't want to get rid of all of that, but I agree there are some things here that probably doesn't apply, they're not really valuable to the town in terms of the town planner. Um, for example, uh, for, supports initiative to attract, retain, expand business, promote economic, I, I don't know if that should be one of his primary goals. Uh, I mean, he works with the planning board, we're designing the planning of the town, um, and some of your research applies for and manages grants, I can see that. So I think a little discussion as to what would be appropriate there, but I, I would like to see at least some of that section kept in there for him.
So I, I, I think the first, that, the, the one you just read makes sense, because if you think about like, um, zoning and things like that, like if he sees land that is zoned for, he or she sees land that's zoned for something, uh, for residential, but thinks it could be good towards economic development, we could, he could recommend changing the zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So I think there's value in keeping, uh, ideas around, um, promote economic vitality, because he could, he or she could, um, know ways to promote economic biz, or businesses, um, that others may not see.
Okay.
I think, I think it makes sense to leave it in there.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there might be things here that really overburden him in terms of economic development that we shouldn't be doing, it should be, like serves as first point of contact for business inquiries, why shouldn't that be the town administrator? And then pass it on, so you can reply to that.
So, it, it may through the chair. Um, I, I think the community development coordinator is just a statement saying that when you're coming to town as a business, the first stop is the planning office, and, you know, they, they come in, look for zoning maps, what's these zoning maps in the town, what, what can be built, stuff like that. That's the first stop, is there, and then the, um, the building official, in, you know, in coordination. I think because this works directly under the supervision of the town administrator, I think the town administrator will be the one that's driving any economic development policy for the town with the town planner's assistance, along with the billing inspector as well, in the planning board, but.
Through the chair? Uh, directed to our town administrator? As the serving interim town administrator, what you've seen, are there any items on here you, you think that would overly burden on top of all his other duties, what he needs to do, that we could eliminate? I mean, we have the RDFIC, you know, we have, is there things that could be duplicated that we could?
The way, the way I look at things now, as the development is progressing in town, um, some of the subdivisions are coming to closing, some will be opening soon, um, I, I think the workload is there, and I think it covers it pretty well. I think when the survey went out for Route sixty-eight to see if, you know, potential different zoning, I, I think that needs to be followed up, and this individual would be able to handle that. Um, again, it's all about balance and how you balance workflow and the, the needs of the community at that given moment, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think with the, I, I, again, I think there are important things to have in here, but I think that's, uh, you know, some direction from the town administrator to work with the planner to ensure that these areas do receive some focus, and that it's not just put by the wayside.
If I may, if I may, I think it also puts the onus on, um, the select board to ensure that boards and committees understand that this is the workflow for, um, because I think some of the challenges, I, looking back at the past couple planners, some of the challenges have be, have been, things have still been very kind of segmented, um, and the planner sometimes is lo, is the last one to know anything, and that's not beneficial, because there may be other conversations happening, or, or whatever, and so I think, uh, kind of the multi-group teamwork that went in to get Harmony Heights in at the heights, and whether, y- you know, regardless of everyone's feelings of that, that was a multi-group successful push to market the property and, and bring something in. Um, and so I think that it's, it, that it's really important, but that it is on us as, as, it's on the town administrator to hold the employee accountable, but it's also on us to communicate to the boards and committees, um, that, hey, we have staff, and this is the kind of order of operations for the staff.
If I may, Leah, are you, are you proposing we keep this?
Yes, I, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, but just that I think it's a, a very important piece, and it shows that commitment to, um, to ec, the economic development piece and community development. We also, um, there's been emails back and forth about the master plan, and so once that's finalized, um, having that, that follows kind of, that's a planning board document, that's a document that sits in the planning bo, planning office, but a lot of that speaks to economic development, um, in recre, uh, in on the recreation side as well, so I think that kind of that community development piece is, is beneficial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any thoughts, Paul?
It's, it's going to be up to the town planner to oversee all these functions, then I would suggest at this particular point in time that, okay, if this is, if this is the way that we want to do it, and it does appear to me to be okay, but, you know, um, I think it's probably better that the town planner be reporting to maybe the town administrator on a more regular basis and, and passed on to us or whatever, so that we have a fairly decent idea of where, where the town planner is headed and what we are looking at down the road.
If I might make another comment, um, I don't think we've had a town plan here long enough to see if all these functions really work for him, so I guess, you know, like I said, I, it looks like it was well put together, so I, I, I don't see any need to change anything at this point.
Sounds like that's the general consensus of the board, comfortable with what's been presented here. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if we can just, um, you, you said you're going to review that with the planning board tomorrow, or?
Tomorrow at their meeting, and that'll be advertised by the end of the week.
Okay, all right, and if there's anything, um, the planning board, you'll let us know?
Yeah.
All right. Um, we will move into the social equity policy, um, as you remember, this is, um, this is, um, this, we brought this up at our last meeting, this is a policy that we need to have in place, um, for host community agreements. We had a couple of questions, um, for the attorney. Actually, if, if the board doesn't mind, um, can we switch to the HR study? I apologize, I, I know you guys, these are, we have CMRPC reps here in person.
Ah, that's yours, I thought you lived here.
So I apologize. If the board is amenable to, um, popping over to that, um, agenda item, I, thank you for your patience, um, so we can do that, and then we'll, we'll come back to the, the CCC policy. Um, so, uh, again, we have the human resources study, we'll switch gears. Um, so, we have the human resources assessment, which was in our packets, um, which is the report that was provided, um, by CMRPC. It was, um, the first half of a study that was done to, um, kind of see where we're at with regards to HR-related, um, uh, just HR in general, you know, where we're currently at, they did interviews with, uh, town employees, um, and, um, the report here, um, presents their findings with, with what we're at, as well as, um, potential recommendations. Um, so hopefully the board has had a chance to review. Um, I know you didn't have any sort of presentation, but there's. I know you didn't have any sort of presentation, but is there anything you want to add? Otherwise, we can just open it up to questions from the board.
Good with that, yeah?
Through the chair. I don't mean to be, but on the document, it says, "he." Who's he? On our, it says, "We will be having to represent and attend our meeting via Zoom." He and his colleague Stephanie. Who's he?
Me, probably.
Yeah.
What's your name?
I'm Connor Robichaud. I'm the Director of Regional Services.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you meant in our report.
Connor, Stephanie, thank you for being here.
Okay.
So I think, I guess I'll, I'll start just by, thank you for the very thorough report. I appreciate what you've, what you've written here. There's a couple of things that have stood out to me. Words such as decentralized and fragmented model. You know, it's, I think it's not been a secret that I have strong feelings about needing some sort of H R support for the staff in town. And I think for me personally, just going through the report results and hearing the feedback that was provided by the department heads, it, it's, it's something that we need. The, the feedback backs up the need for some sort of a centralized H R role for them to to have, not just as a point of contact to go to, but to ensure that there's consistency in the policies, that policies are being reviewed, that they're being applied equitably amongst the staff, things along those lines. Right now, it's just, you know, very disjointed with department heads doing what they can for their own staff. The town administrator is, is just, there's so much on the town administrator's plate. It's just much more of a general, you know, oversight with regards to H R. And there's not one particular person that has expertise in a lot of the H R areas. So that's.
Okay. I have some questions for Connor and the board.
Sure, go ahead.
Connor, I'm going to be asking you some questions here. Probably deep diving a little bit more than you've expressed here on this one because I don't see any notes or references or anything to relate back to. This is just a report, so I'm going to have to dig a little deep in order to get some of those.
Okay.
Okay. Communication gaps. You refer to policies and procedures. Are those specifically related to the human resource manual? Or it's not relating to all town policies? In other words, that doesn't relate to building policy and all that, right?
Correct.
This is just H R policies you're talking about, okay? And why do you say there, since we have that manual, why do you say they're not always clearly or consistently communicated when we have that manual there for human resource? Employee handbook.
I think in that case, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're making reference to the, the many different folks that carry out the, the policies and implement them. So you have a number of department heads who are tasked with doing H R. None of them are experts in H R, not to say that they don't do a great job, but they all have core functions that are different from the, the human resource function. So each person has a little bit different approach, different personality, and therefore the policies are implemented slightly differently across the board.
If I, so I just, I have a quick comment, just if I may, on that part. I think if we recall, the H R policies, comprehensive H R policies were recently adopted. And so I think some of that may be the, the, the streamlining to department heads and their comfort, comfort level with them because it was a large document that never used to exist. And so I think it could, some of it could be, I don't disagree that it's probably the decentralization piece as much as it is just it was new when we, when this was, assessment was done last spring.
And I think that there's some interpretation of it that, that different department heads may communicate. So you get, you know, more of a focus on, on one thing with one director where you get, you know, a different interpretation with another one and a different focus.
Good point. On the, is there one, one factor that you saw throughout the whole thing or one communication gap that you saw was pretty prevalent throughout? I mean, East Department, when they told you this, there's one thing that kind of stood out from all that in terms of the communication gap?
Trying to think of, so I think that sometimes it's that, that just bounce ideas off of somebody, communication part of it, like the, the directors being able to bounce ideas off of H R. And I think because there was no one to communicate or it was going to the town administrator, sometimes that availability was difficult. And so just being able to have that communication and be able to bounce ideas off of somebody or ask them what they think, I think would have been, would be helpful for directors.
I, I know what Webster's dictionary says is decentralized. What's your definition? How do you see human resources being decentralized? What do you mean by that?
The way, I think we wrote it was instead of it being, you know, one or two people that are, that's their core function. It's, you know, belongs to all department heads.
And it also, like for benefits, it's one person. For payroll, it's one person. For H R, it's another person. So I feel like P, the directors even had a hard time and there was a transition period during this that they had a hard time of like saying, this is definitely the person that you need to go to for benefits question or this is who you need to go for to for payroll question.
So they, so some of the questions where you, they weren't even certain who they go to for payroll?
And that varied by department as well. Some people knew exactly who they needed to go to and some people did not.
And you see that as a human resource function to make sure that everybody understands what department they have to go to?
Department for payroll or payroll or H R.
No, I'm saying H R says, oh, you got this. Go see, go see payroll. Oh, you got this problem. Go here. Or you got this problem. Go there. Because I would have thought that your department heads would already have known that.
So the payroll function could fall under H R, the payroll function itself could fall under an H R person.
Okay.
I should know. It, it did previously when we did have an H R coordinator. Payroll was under her.
It was?
Yes.
Okay. One thing that concerns me, not concerns me, it makes me question is moral and equity concerns. It says, "Staff expressed." How many staff did you talk to? I'm concerned if it's fifty people or two.
Department heads, about, I think there was.
Some are department heads.
Twelve.
Well, those are depart, not staff. I'm talking, how, well then define staff for me. What do you mean by staff?
Well, we're asking department heads to speak for their department, so reporting back on what they perceive their staff's experience to be as well.
Oh, so you're talking about the staff of department heads, not the department heads themselves? So, see, that's where I'm getting.
Yes, it depends.
I get a list here of the department head you talked to and all that. I don't know how many staff I see there. So you're saying that you're questioning them on how their staff feels. You're not actually talking to quote, "staff."
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. So if you're not talking to staff, I guess I'd have to say I'm not sure. When you say about inconsistent treatment between union and non-union employees, how the department heads can make a determination on that without talking to staff?
Well, I would think that the staff talk to the department heads. I mean, at my job, my staff talks to me all the time and tells me what they're concerned about. So I would, if, if they were, if someone is questioning me as a manager, I, I know a lot of my staff's concerned. To your point, they may have other concerns and they may not have brought those to, like, they may not hear about that because it might not get to them, but I, I think that it's reasonable that some or many concerns would go through a managerial position and therefore would get funneled into this research.
And, and so when you question them, you found inconsistent treatment for union members?
I think that was one of the current, concerns that came up. It was a statement, but I also think like listening, because this was done, I think, at a time where there wasn't going to be raises for people and there was current concerns over that. And I think that has been rectified, from my understanding. But that was one of the things is, union employees were going to get increases while non-union employees were not going to get increases and that was mostly directed at that.
Okay, so that is what you attribute to morale?
There's other morale issues as well, but, and, and that varied by department as well.
I mean, I guess, I'm looking at this and please don't take offense. I'm looking at this, I'm saying, they get good pay, they got wonderful benefits. Some departments have offer Fridays, you know, some have varied schedules and we have a morale problem. So I'm trying to figure out how those two work together. Okay? Let's see. I can understand where the staffing limitations come in, making it difficult to manage H R responsibilities without additional support. I can see that for sure. Okay. All right, that's kind of all I have for the questions of assessment.
Just looping back, I, I totally take your point on that we didn't talk to staff. I think when we were drawing up the sort of methodology for the report, that was the preferred method when we were working with Austin initially. He said that he seemed confident that, you know, department heads knew the issues of their departments, but if we wanted to broaden the scope, we certainly could talk to more staff if that were.
No, no, I was just curious how many quote, "staff" we did talk to.
Yeah.
So most of it came from the department heads.
Yeah.
Okay. We're looking at a technical department and this is a technical department here. This is all that you see of them, okay? So in other words, okay, they're on the other side of the wall. This is where they work. This is what they do. And occasionally they get out in public because they bring a camera out to record something that's going on. So these people are there doing what they do and we try and get together at least once a month to sit down and hash things out, talk over what the situations are and so on and so forth. And so, you know, okay, it's one of these things that makes some departments perhaps operate a little bit differently than others.
Just a question. On page three of the report, under methodology, it said, "These conversations based on day-to-day H R response, policy implementation, recruitment, and onboarding practices, training opportunities in areas of, areas of concern or risk." I'm not sure what you mean by risk, but I didn't see on there anything about their concern of why the person left and an exit interview. Was that even an issue for them? D P W, you have a great mechanic. The guy leaves. Does the department head really know why? Because he doesn't really do an exit interview.
Yeah, good point.
So, but I, I don't see that on here.
If I may, I don't know that that was the intent of this study. This was just to identify more areas of where we're at and where we could
Could go.
Could go with regards to H R, which one of those being having somebody within H R can assist with conducting exit interviews on why employees are leaving.
No, but my, the point I was, maybe I wasn't clear. The point I was trying to get at is from an H R standpoint, we should be able to know why this person left from an H R standpoint, so we don't repeat our mistakes in H R. And nobody expressed that to you, that, that was a concern.
The need for exit interviews, is that your?
Yeah, or to find out why. Who, who, who in the town can take care of that? So they can come back to me and say, here's why the person left. We got to correct that.
I think there was some, I mean, there was obviously a conversation around that and, you know, whether it be assumptions or people told their managers why they left. I think we did talk about challenges of retention and certain departments obviously had more retention issues than others. And I think, you know, sometimes it's pay, sometimes it's the pressure of the job. And so it definitely differs for each department and there are areas that have more challenges than others with retention.
And I would, I would add to your, your point about exit interviews, the, the importance of having a, a neutral third party to go to with not just a complaint when you're leaving, but a complaint when you're here. That was definitely something that, that came up as an important thing.
And if I may, I'm kind of on, on one of the later pages, P H R Needs and Gaps Staffing and Capacity. I think it does address kind of the, all those gaps that we're talking about right now, just as a whole.
To, to add to that, I mean, like, it, it stays right in here, you know, we, we have a tendency to be reactive rather than proactive. So we, we don't address anything until there's a problem. And again, having H R that would have oversight, more general oversight of staff can help be more proactive. You know, if that individual staff member does have a concern, they have that neutral third party to go to to discuss that with, to hopefully help assist with rectifying what their concern is. Whereas right now, there is nothing in place that staff member, that issue continues to the point where they decide to leave because nothing has been able to be done to fix it. So that's where I see all of this is, we need that neutral third party, department slash person to help with all of these concerns.
My last question and then we can move on. And I thank your patience for it. Have they expressed concern to you, even going back, that the town administrator was not the person that should have been doing the job of H R? Because that was really where we had it in the past, is what it was. And what was their reasoning, you know, one, two snippets, why they felt that wasn't worthwhile? That the town administrator couldn't do the job?
I can try to generalize that.
I can speak to that one, yeah. So I think just in general, a town administrator, sometimes there's a greater experience with human resources, but it's not necessarily their expertise, nor is it, you know, with, you know, being responsible for a lot of different things in the town, it's not something that they may have time for. H R could be very time-consuming and like certain issues and different claims of like M C A A D claims or harassment or anything like that. An investigation is very, very time-consuming, not to mention all the other things on a town administrator's plate. But also the fact that it's a neutral party and that, that seemed to be important to at least the directors or that they cast, they'd be able to send their staff to somebody that was more, you know, of a neutral party than the town administrator.
Okay. Sorry, one more thing. You mentioned you were wondering what kind of risk we were talking about. And there, I think we were talking about sort of a legal risk around compliance or, you know, potential lawsuits, liability that's down and reputational risk. Those are the two or three categories that I would, I would put the risk into, if that's helpful.
So I thought I'd ask my last question, but you raised one for me. So with that legal issue in mind, would you say that we, if we decide to do that, go for our own? Should we look for somebody that has some type of even paralegal training? If, if we're looking at a lot of legal, legal issues here, you need somebody that's kind of not really understand, but has a concept where to go in terms of legality stuff, right?
I think if you had someone with H R experience, they would know the, the guardrails that they're going to work within as far as the, the legal compliance piece goes. I wouldn't worry too much about having a legal background.
So in your years of doing this, what have you seen as the, the years that you would expect in H R that would understand this? Five years, seven years, ten years?
I think we said five in the report.
I said at least five years.
Is that the norm out there, five years?
I think that's the point at which you get somebody who would know, hit, sort of hit the ground running, right?
Working purely in H R?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's somebody that.
It could be gradual, you know.
H R, payroll.
H R. HR payroll, these sort of functions within HR.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Good questions.
Any other questions on the study?
I don't, if I, I don't have any questions. I just wanna thank you guys for doing the study. And I realize it was kind of during a tumultuous time in town with a lot of different transitions and uncertainty in the budget. So that created a whole lot of additional, um, kind of feelings. But I don't, on, on the flip side, and unfortunately, I don't think that those are, um, a single year issue. I think that that has been the norm in Rutland, unfortunately. So in some ways, I am thankful that you got to capture some of that also. Um, and so I think I, I've always supported the HR. I think my piece is how to fund it, how to fund a, a, a genuine HR position. And whether that's regionalized part, I don't think, I think in exploring, it's been really, really hard to find a part-time, anyone interested in, uh, solely just part-time position. Um, so it's really looking at either sharing or regionalizing or something. Um, because I think for what we, what we need, I think we, you know, and that we need to invest in it. Um, I think the policies were a good start. We knew going in that the policies weren't perfect and that we're, it was going to, they were going to be work in progress. That I think fell out of this, which is perfect. I mean, um, we have that. We also know we have a lot of unions in town. Um, that also is another kind of piece to the HR side as well. To ensure that all the uni, different union contracts are being followed.
And that is, it leads me to what we'd be looking for from the board is some indication of, if you wanna explore a regional partner, that would be the next step.
Right, I was just gonna say, that's a good segue into the next one. So this was, the study was, um, grant-funded. Um, and we do have the remaining of the grant to continue with the next step if the board wants to, which is to, again, work with C M R P C on that regionalization piece, that outreach to neighboring communities to see if there's any interest in pursuing a regional HR position. Again, it's not locking the town into anything. It's just taking that next step to see what the interest is.
If I may, could that also, and this is just a bring, like, throw stuff at the wall kind of, could it also be reaching out to the regional schools? We have Wachusett as well as Bay Path to see if they have capacity to add in municipal support?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what that, I, I have no idea what that would look like and if it would be, and if there'd be conflicts or anything, but just as a potential, um, option.
I floated it to the, I worked with the school district on another, another project. Um, and the superintendent's office was open to talking about it. Again, no, no promises, but I'd be happy to have that conversation.
I personally fully support moving forward with exploring, um, options for, uh, sustainable HR position within Rutland. Um, that's my personal.
Do you, do you need a motion or just a direction that the board?
Just direction.
Okay, so the, is the board amenable to, to pursuing that next?
Use the rest of the grant.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
My only concern is that HR, you generally want it to be a relationship-built person that employees feel comfortable going to. A regional person may or may not create that sort of comfort. Um, I think that the right person could, but I do see that as a, a limiting factor in having a regional, but it's certainly worth exploring.
Stephanie, what, how do you spell your last name?
T O U P I N.
T O U P I S?
P I N.
P I N. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you both being here. And we look forward to the next piece.
Yeah, if you have other questions, feel free to reach out.
All right. Um, so we'll go back to the social equity policy. Um, again, this is the continued discussion for the host community agreement. We did review this. Uh, there were several questions, um, which went back to town council. Uh, to me, I think that's in.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, we have the town council's, um, responses. I think the, the bigger pieces, excuse me, the bigger questions, um, if I may just go through, um, we had talked about the fees. I don't think there was anything significant about that. The board seemed to be amenable with just off, um, having fees that would cover administrative expenses associated with it. Um, I think one of the bigger areas of discussion was, um, surrounding the, the town administrator reviewing the applications and having a, um, a committee of, um, other, you know, particularly department heads or, or whatnot to, to review. Um, the, the comments from town council on that were just to, you know, for the board to be aware that if we, if we decide on a formal committee, that committee would be bound by open meeting law requirements. Um, so there's, you know, which we can certainly do. They would just have to have posted meetings, meeting minutes, et cetera. Um, or there's the option of just having the town administrator, again, be like the point of contact and seeking out the feedback of the, you know, the police chief, the fire chief, building, uh, building inspector, um, you know, whichever staff would be most appropriate, um, to get their thoughts on the application as far as that. So I don't know if the board has any specific.
I have a question on that. Is, is, um, O M L, if the town administrator were to create the kind of internal review committee with staff, is it still subject to O M L? Say that again? If the, if the town administrator were to create the, like, in, create a, a, a group for feedback made up comprised of staff, only staff?
Mm-hmm.
Is that subject to O M L?
Um, I, I think that's, that's where the, the lines were a little gray. If we, like, again, if we make it an official subcommittee, like town committee, they would be.
Right, and I wasn't, sorry. I wasn't, in my, in our conversations previously, I wasn't proposing that by any means at all. I was saying that let the town administrator do it, but that I think last time there was value to having input from department heads. And I believe at the time there was, um, and this was iterations ago, right? But I believe at the time, the town administrator had put together a, a employee-only review, like, review committee. But maybe it was simply the checks and balances side of things, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so maybe that's where we can look at, um, you know, I think two kind of encompasses that a little bit. So if there's a way, uh, either, you know, we keep it as is or combine one and two. Again, it's just noting that the applications would, would come into the town administrator and be forwarded to town departments, including but not limited to fire, police, building, health, conservation for their feedback. That seems to, you know.
Yeah, any work product that they would produce would be public record.
Right.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with, with what's there, that's regarding that.
I just wanted to be clear that my intent wasn't to form a, a separate, like, ad hoc review committee, like, it was more of a staff does the work.
Okay. All right, is every, does that sound agreeable to the board, any other?
No.
Sorry about that, okay. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over that rubric for the moment, but I think the other.
I was gonna say, I liked the piece about, um, changing, sorry, changing the language, um, that it could be transferable in the event of minor changes of control, ownership or control, because I think we had conversations about that, that we didn't necessarily want, um, a, a, a major holdup for things. But that we did have concerns kind of where that is. So, um, I do like that language about that in the event of minor changes or of ownership or control. I'm not sure how we would define that or if there's a legal definition as far as what that is. Or if that would come out in a, in a separate policy or something.
Yeah, and, and actually, um, town council even said that we could, we could completely remove that item and we, it could be addressed at the, um, in the actual H C A itself. So that would kind of, I think, because we don't know and they're kind of case by case, you know, it could always be just written in as needed for the case that it currently is, so.
I'd like that. I just would wanna make sure that there's documentation for anybody, for any other board or staff that's working on the H C As to note that, that, that that is something that should be thought about, whether it's definitely addressed or not, but that it's a point to.
H C A.
Yeah, that it needs to be thought about when developing the H C A. Like I said, it may be a non-issue, I don't, but I don't wanna lose just because it's not formally documented anywhere. I don't wanna lose that.
Do we have a good place that we could have that noted or is it better to?
Make a new subsection for it, but it could be done.
Okay.
Or even on a, like an H C A template, just like things, items to consider or something?
We also have to have, um, a very thorough page on our website.
Right.
So we could make sure that we make that very apparent during the description portion as well.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm fine removing it then. I just don't want it to get lost in.
Agreed. How's the rest of the board feel about removing that provision?
Transferable makes sense.
To keep it in the policy or do it at the H C A?
No, so it's saying that it, to take it out would make it transferable, right? Take that line out.
It's just, it, it basically, it would, it's not doing anything in the policy. We, it may or may not be transferable in the individual H C A itself, depending on the applicant, the scenario, the situation. Is what we're.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, yes, so ta- take it out, I, I, yes.
Okay.
I would take it out and then do it based on the H, uh, H C A.
Yeah.
Is that agreeable to you, Harry and Paul?
That's good, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Fine.
Um, and then I think the last big piece was the, um, the scoring rubric, which we didn't wanna have a big discussion on this evening. We, um, we did have the question, uh, because we had heard that we may not need to have one, but we did get confirmation from town council that we do need to have one. So we are, um, we have one, um, option that we are gonna look at as well as one from, can you remind me who is gonna provide it, another?
Town council's gonna, um, provide us with a sample one from the C C C.
Okay, thank you.
She just happened to be out of the office today. Um, and then we had another one that we had drafted. I know we initially talked about using the one from the previous H C A in two thousand nineteen. Um, but it was very not user-friendly, if that makes sense. And, and we didn't think it would be helpful to the discussion. So we'd like to bring something back to the board that's a little bit more concrete to talk about.
Yeah, so we'll have some options at our next meeting, the November tenth meeting, to review, um, the thing with the scoring rubric is there's, it's really up to what the board wants to see in it outside of that, um, outside of the, um, twenty-five-point equity portion of the rubric. That's the only requirement. So, um, again, as Mika said, we have a couple of options we'll bring before the board and see what seems to make the most sense for, for everybody. Were there any other?
Can I just ask the board their opinion? Um, town council indicated that you do not have to waive the social equity fee, I believe. Is that what it is? I'm just wondering if the board would like to keep that or what you would prefer to do.
Yes, we, we wanted to keep it and come up with a, a fee that was just going to cover the administrative expenses. So whatever, um, you know, based on your expertise, what that, whatever the appropriate amount was.
If I may, I was gonna say, I think we've kinda talked about keeping it in line with our other fees for other applications, um, and just because we were not charging in exorbitant, it was essentially just to meet costs that we didn't feel comfortable cutting, um, waiving that.
Yep. Got any other questions or outstanding?
Thank you for getting that feedback.
Um, on this issue?
On the equity policy.
No, I'm good.
All right, so the, the plan would be, again, to review that, the rubric options for the November tenth meeting and then, um, vote to hopefully adopt the policy at that meeting. So that will be forthcoming. Okay, um, we have a one-day liquor license application for Seven Sauz Brewing.
Uh, that's under new business? Void of order? I had a request under old business?
Uh, that, it, we cannot discuss that, Harry. There's, there's nothing on the agenda.
It says, anything not, anything not, what's, what's it say at the bottom here? Anything not anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting.
I understand.
Therefore.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to.
So you're going to not, I just make sure. You're going to deny a motion and not let the board discuss whether or not the citizens of this town have a right to a full board vote instead of a tie on discussion of the approval of the streets. Is that what you're saying as chair?
Those agenda items have passed and are closed. And yes, as chair, I am saying that we will not reopen discussions under old business for this.
I have, as a right, I have a right to make a motion. You can deny it if you wish.
Harry, it's not on the agenda, so there's nothing to make a motion on.
Doesn't have to be on the agenda. It says right here. Okay? Item's not anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting. So I am requesting, under old business, 'cause that's what it is, but I just wanna know, for legal status, you are denying me the opportunity to make a motion. Because the citizens have a right to know.
I am stating that it is not on a posted agenda and it is not something to be discussed at tonight's meeting.
So you're denying me my motion? Yes or no? That's all, yes or no? You're denying me my motion?
I am stating that it is not an agenda item and it is, it, it, the topic has already been discussed and voted on and closed. So no, it will not be discussed at tonight's meeting.
All right, so you're not even asking for the board's recommendation of whether we're willing to discuss it or not? Okay, I wanted an open meeting of what the chair is stating for the board, making a board decision by the chair, okay?
Again, moving into one-day liquor license application for Seven Sauz Brewing.
I would just hope that you don't have things for, for discussion and that you consistently follow the rules that you set with all due respect.
Public comment is closed, there will be no discussion, thank you.
And look, we'll look for an ethics violation, thank you.
Unbelievable. There's the one-day liquor license for Seven Sauz Brewing.
Can, can I get a point of order though?
There is no point of order, there is no more public discussion regarding it, thank you. Public comment is closed.
It was a no-tidest motion.
The event date is November eighth.
Understood.
Hours of event from twelve to six P M. at Rut, Rut, Rutland Recreation on two fifty Main Street. Everything is in order for the liquor license?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the license?
This is for the Wachusett youth football party, just for confirmation, sorry. I, there was a little bit of stuff, so I may have missed it. Um, and it's just for the public, the out-of-town, because I don't, it's not checked on our application, the out-of-town fee was.
Yes, I apologize. Yep, the out-of-town fee was collected.
I, I knew, knew we had that in like an email or our meetings packet, but I just wanted to confirm.
Yep, they did pay the.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I would make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Seven Sauz Brewing on November eighth from noon to six P A, P M. at two fifty Main Street as presented for the Wachusett youth football party.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We'll call Alex.
Jennifer.
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 I just wanna open my message on this next item. All right, um, next item is the Municipal Empowerment Act. Um, this is something that I had mentioned a little while ago. Um, this, uh, the M M A had reached out to communities to see if they'd be willing to provide a letter of support, uh, for the new legislation. There is a draft letter for consideration. Um, I don't know if the board had had the time to review any of, um, what's entailed as part of the Municipal Empowerment Act. Um, there were all kinds of various, um, items that were included in this, uh, from municipal procurement, uh, municipal procurement changes, um, some local option taxes, uh, collection of water charges, non-resident customers, borrowing for school projects, elderly exemptions, um, allow financing of right of first refusal options, local, I said local options taxes. So again, just a whole, um, array of different, uh, things that they were considering. So I didn't know if the board had any questions on those or what, how the board felt about, um, supplying a letter of support for this.
Yeah.
If I may, I'm all in favor of
Yep.
supporting the Municipal Empowerment Act. I think it's been in the works for a long time and just, um, and I appreciate that it would be signed by all five members because I think that, um, there's a lot of value to having signatures from all five members rather than, uh, the chair or the town administrator or something. And just for clarification, for the local tax option, it's not a guarantee that any of those would be taken. It just empowers the municipalities to move forward with that through town meeting acceptance. So just for the public, that it just is empowering municipalities to have more control of their governance. Acceptance, so just for the public, that it just is empowering municipalities to have more control of their governance.
Any other questions?
I would move to sign the letter of support for the Municipal Empowerment Act to be sent to our state delegation as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion is second, any other discussion? Alright, real call, Alex. Town administrator interviews, schedule alternative dates to interview the top three, we actually heard from the Collins Center today. We have uh, four candidates that they would like to um, present or have the board interview. Um, it was my understanding Seth that they are looking for something within the next ten days. Um, they've requested either um, a a back to back, two candidates, one day, two candidates the next day. Or potentially a Saturday where we just, uh, you know, do two, break for lunch and then do the two and just go through everything. And just something to to consider for the board, um, Seth will be on vacation. As of the fourteenth, do you say, um, November fourteenth? So I think we, at this point, we really just wanna see what the board's availability, what your desire is, either uh, two back to back or a Saturday. Potentially to um, do these interviews and what your availability might be.
For me personally, I would think it's most fair to try to get them out all at once in the same day, and so I hate to give up a Saturday. But for me, a Saturday would be more ideal, I think I can make the commitment easier on a Saturday and come in with a fresh mind. For all of them, rather than um, two back to backs on a night, on nights that I'm not sure what I'm coming from or going back to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just difficult, um. I I suppose I I could do a Saturday, I just would have to ensure I don't have anything planned already, cause I, uh, going into holiday seasons. I have a lot of things that are pre-planned. So I just, I I just need to make sure that I, whatever we to check.
Yeah, and and I would just note if we're, again, it it's not necessary, but if we would like Seth to be here for these interviews. We'd be looking at November eighth, um, otherwise we'd have to, uh, any, anything beyond that for a Saturday. Either Seth won't be here or we'd be pushing it out.
If I may, it sounds like, if I understood correctly, Jen, the Collins Center was looking to have these interviews kind of finished within the next kind of half month. So even before the fourteenth. Um, and so I guess it would be either the first or the eighth, the first would be tough just because of posting.
Um, they will not give us the names until we pick the days and do the posting, so we don't leak anything out, um, so that's their concern. And if you split it over two days, they strongly recommend or request that you do no deliberations the first night. Of the first two candidates, you save all deliberations till the final four are complete.
What about you, Paul, any? Preference?
I'm fine.
Alright, so if we can, if if the board can just confirm schedules, um, and just let me know or let the office know. So that we can look to, I, for November eighth ideally.
Yeah, I'll follow tomorrow.
Um, and then we can, that seems to be, Harry, I don't know what your schedule looks like, do you wanna?
You know, since I retired, I am so busy right now. Seth will get to know what that's like. Uh, yeah, I have nothing right now scheduled for the eighth.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pencil it in, Alex will just get back to us and um.
What time?
Ten to noon and then one to two, one to three.
Are they anticipating about an hour each? Okay, so ten to twelve and then.
Usually it's forty-five minutes and then fif- fifteen minutes, either question, if there's additional questions or bathroom break or just to kind of regroup.
So we have forty-five minutes to determine.
It's a forty-five minute interview, we interview the candidate, we're with the candidate for forty-five minutes.
It's growing.
Well, I, yeah, that's, as as long as that day seems, it actually seems like a very short amount of time to be with a candidate.
At the end of the night, after you do four, if you feel you can't make a decision, you wanna bring one or two back for a second, if you, you can absolutely do that too. And you can deal with that on a regular night.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'll get back on timing. Tomorrow with the latest.
Alright, so we'll, we'll pencil it in for the eighth, ten to twelve and one to three. And we'll just confirm the board's full availa- availability.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you wanna consider one to four, just push for, not for the candidates, but if we wanna have any.
Any further discussion?
Discussion deliberation, maybe post it as an exec session, I'm not sure. Then we, if we don't have it, we don't have it, like if we're burnt out or we haven't, we wanna bring more ca- candidates back, like, yes, but we have it.
No, that's a good idea.
Are we gonna do it here? Can we not sit in these seats?
Hopefully the noodles been by then.
And just formally that, I'll make the eighth work for me personally.
Um, okay. Alright, so we will um, confirm that in the next uh, day or two. Get that posted, um, I, while we're on the topic, um, going back to what Seth had mentioned.
You skipped over the uh, warrant.
Oh, jeez, sorry, never mind, back to special town meeting warrant, we have the final warrant um, in our packets, so we just need to um. Uh, vote to sign uh, the warrant for the town meeting on November twentieth.
I move to approve and sign the special town warrant meeting for November twenty, twenty twenty-five as presented and reviewed at our last meeting.
And town council reviewed.
Paul, did you just second?
Any discussion on that topic?
Alright.
Ledger eye. Okay, um. Again, going back to Seth's um, note about the tax type, not tax title, the tax classification hearing. Um, a- again, just pointing it out there, I don't know that we need to have a decision tonight, but just, or do you, or do you want something? Okay, ideally, proposed meeting for Monday, December first for the tax classification hearing, again, just because of the timing and when those need to be done.
It should be a very quick meeting, forty-five minutes at most.
Is that something that? I was just gonna say, could we consider a Zoom meeting if that would be? If the board would prefer that? And we'll ensure it's restricted to only that topic. Uh, or we can certainly do it in person, whatever the board would prefer.
Off-scheduled Monday, yes. I can make it work, I mean, I don't know, yeah, I can make it work.
I'm sorry, Amy's gonna wanna come in with.
I was gonna say, for something like that, I just prefer in person, um, but if there's a Zoom option, I think that that could be helpful for sure. I'll try to be in person, but.
What does the rest of your schedule look for December first?
December first should be fine, I mean, if it's short, I would, I think Zoom would make a lot more sense, but.
Is that okay for you, Harry and Paul?
Whatever.
So it sounds like we're, we're okay for December first and we'll make sure we have a Zoom option for.
Absolutely.
Um, we can do in person for whoever will be here and then if it's Zoom is more convenient, you know, please.
Just remember, town office buildings will be closed on Veterans Day, the eleventh, Tuesday.
The Tuesday after, yeah. Um, are there any future agenda requests?
Yeah, I think we should uh, put a agenda item on to look at options for how we can plow the streets that we just didn't place. I don't know how we go about doing that, but I think we owe it to at least discuss and look at that.
We submitted, we sent out a memo today that will be going out to the residents.
Yeah, I saw the memo, I haven't read it.
I mean, I. I'm not sure what we can discuss, they're not town owned.
I I agree with Alex, we. We don't wanna get into a situation from a safety standpoint where it's still a town development area. And they do pay taxes, so the town does need to look at doing something. Uh, if, because if Clee Blair decides not to plow, that doesn't leave a lot of options for us. For the town, maybe other than to sue him, that's it. So if we're gonna let them go in snowstorms through November, December, January.
Yeah, and and I'm not saying that anything will come of it, I I don't know, I I think we just owe it to the people specifically that were here. And then the people that live there that we at least have it and talk about it, I I just, I think it's unfair that we don't at least discuss it.
If I'm, if I may, is it, can we share the memo that's going out to, to, cause I don't think all the residents that were here have received the memo? So, do you wanna, do you wanna read it, Jen, the memo that's going out to the residents, or is that okay to do, just?
Can we read that now?
It went out in the mail, it'll go out in the first thing tomorrow morning.
Oh, no, it's okay. Um, alright, so this is the memo that will go out to those residents regarding that. Thanks, alright, um, to the residents of Woodside Avenue Pioneer Circle and Arrowhead Way. Subject clarification regarding roadway plowing and public acceptance status. Dear residents, the town has received inquiries from home- homeowners within the Bryce Estates and Bear Hill two subdivisions. Regarding the status of your neighborhood roadways and concerns related to snow plowing and maintenance. Since the streets are not being placed on the town meeting warrant for acceptance, as such, we would like to provide clarification and reassurance on this matter. As outlined in the town's subdivisions, subdivision rules and regulations section seven improvements subsection J three. Until such time that the streets are formally accepted as public ways at a town meeting. They remain the responsibility of the owner slash applicant, or in this case, the developer. This language has been documented in the rules and regulations since nineteen eighty-two, including those versions that were in effect. At the time of subdivision approval for Bryce Estates and Bear Hill two. This includes but is not limited to snow plowing and winter maintenance, general roadway upkeep, repairs necessary to maintain safe conditions. Acceptance of a roadway as a public way is a multi-step process that can only occur once the roadway has been completed to town standards. And all necessary documentation and inspections have been satisfied. The applicant is eligible to resubmit their street acceptance request for consideration at the annual town meeting in May twenty twenty-six. The planning board remains the point of contact for concerns related to the subdivision rules and regulations. We understand that roadway acceptance is important to our residents and we remain committed to working collaboratively with the developer. To support progress towards eventual acceptance. Should you have additional questions or require further clarification, please feel free to contact the town administrator's office. At admin at townofrutland dot org, thank you for your patience and cooperation as the subdivision works through the remaining steps of this process. So that's the memo that um, was drafted and will be sent to the residents of those.
I have issues with this memo, the chair.
Uh, Harry, it's not a point of discussion, it's the memo that was sent out, if the board is agreeable to having a discussion regarding the the. Maintenance, the plowing maintenance for these roads.
It never got went through the board, this was not a board decision. So I don't care what you say, Jen, this was not a board decision, this might have been your decision as chair, not a board decision. You didn't offer the people the other options out there. And you didn't state that the select board is the point of contact for street.
Harry, I am not going to entertain any further comment on the memo, I am not going to entertain any further comment. The chair is not au- authorizing any further comment, the memo has gone out, if the board is agreeable to having this discussion. We can put it on a future agenda.
Too late.
Are there any other future agenda requests? Uh, Leah, I know you did have the Watch Uset Leadership Group, I have not forgotten that.
It's not, I mean, I just wanted to bring it up, I know we have other more pressing things, but I didn't, yeah.
But we will bring it back around. For our upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting November tenth, we have the special town meeting on November twentieth. Um, we have uh, potentially November eighth for the um, town administrator interviews. November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five is a regular town meeting and then um, we just confirmed the December first meeting for the tax classification hearing. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Motion to adjourn, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Not allowed by the board.
We are adjourned at.